I believe last time you allowed a video submission.
With a strict time limit.
Uh, is that a concern that, you know, too short of a time for someone to schedule that or? Maybe like, you know, the, they can do a video submission, which we did last time. Yeah.
I would also say that if someone misses the deadline, we can always say that there is an open nomination period for two vacant seats. So there is still that opportunity for them to run truly if they are that interested.
There's three.
Three, sorry.
Three terms that are up there.
Sorry.
Your seat is up too.
Three adds up tonight. So, um, that's the general consensus, uh, that we'll go ahead and, and do the fast track. We came to an agreement on the questions. Any other issues at hand? You want a motion on that? Probably not. Yeah. So we need a motion to, uh, might as well put these together. One is to set the date of the applications. Uh, they need to be turned in by. So applications are due by noon, December thirteenth, and we're agreeing to the questions as we discuss revisions tonight. Go ahead, Amanda.
Um, the only other thing that, that I heard that I would just want to touch on again is you said we wouldn't have time to get it in the observer. Is that because of their normal deadlines?
Yeah, there's only one paper that's going to be between now and the thirteenth, and that's in two, three days. So that deadline's already passed.
Oh, okay. Can they put it online?
I can ask them.
Yeah, we can ask them.
Yep.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, yeah, like at least try to get it out there as best we can. Um, cause some people get alerts and things and they'll see it.
I think your last time, the majority of people read it through the Facebook notification.
And we'll do that too. We'll do the e-notify at the Facebook. I'll do all those things.
Thank you.
You didn't have anything to do, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, we're agreeing on the questions and the timeline. Uh, now to make a motion to that effect. Jason, second, further discussion. Hearing on all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. And thank you for your help over here. Okay, nine item, uh, excuse me, nine, new business items for discussion or possible action. A, discuss locally imposed limitations and restrictions related to Class A alcohol beverage licenses in the village code. Uh, again, we had a typical, uh, good memo from Candy and Martin. Couple of elements here at hand, and I, I won't be looking for a motion right away. I will mention that, uh, gentleman is here from Hy-Vee in case there are questions. Um, and look for some initial direction from board members. Questions, comments?
I guess just in the general questions, a thousand fifty-six feet seems kind of like an odd number. Was there a reason why a thousand fifty-six feet?
It's two thousand, or two tenths of a mile. So it equates to two tenths of a mile.
Was there an issue in that the Bills, which sold liquor, was less than a thousand feet from Hometown Pharmacy? Was, how was that addressed?
Hometown Pharmacy didn't have a liquor license.
But, but Bills did, and it was less than a thousand feet away.
It's the prescription, so that you can't have prescription medication sold on the premise of the alcohol license. So that, that Bills and Hometown Pharmacy aren't the same.
Right.
Premise.
Two different entities.
Yeah, so the premise was.
It was when Hy-Vee bought Hometown Pharmacy that.
Well, if, okay, just to, I think I see what you're saying, Tom. They, Hy-Vee's intention is to get rid of that Hy-Vee pharmacy, there, I mean, the, the Hometown Pharmacy location and put one in the grocery store itself.
Right, right. I understood that.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the issue.
But the geographic limit is between Class A licenses, so alcohol licenses, not pharmacies. Does that make sense?
Well, the.
So there's, there's three limi, there's three limitations on Class A alcohol licenses in the village. One is a geographic limitation, which is the thousand fifty-six feet. So Class A licenses can't be within a certain distance from each other.
With the exemptions.
With some exemptions. Um, and the second limitation is, uh, no Class A license shall be granted for any premise where prescription medication is sold. So there's the geographic limitation. There's also this other limitation where you cannot sell prescription medication at the actual place where there's an alcohol license. So that's the issue that we have here, uh, this evening, or what prompted this. And then the third limitation is, uh, any premises where gasoline is sold, uh, cannot sell single servings of fermented malt beverages. So that's the third locally imposed limitation. So those are the three village imposed rules regarding Class A licenses.
Jason.
So am I right to share my thought about this?
Please.
All right, so have to say in terms of the areas of concern that were laid out in the memo, I don't see any reason to hold on to B in the ordinance. And, um, especially when, in all honesty, you can buy your prescription medication and then drive two tenths of a mile and buy alcohol. Um, it's a matter of ease and convenience, not a matter of protecting the public from themselves as much i- i- in my mind. And I, I would rather strike B than make a one-case exemption for one, um, business because it, it, uh, seems to be preferential treatment for Hy-Vee over Walgreens. And so let, let's keep things uniform across the village is my initial thought. I, I don't see what this is, this rule is really preventing or protecting the public from, that would be in a immediate danger to.
So essentially, uh, it's, it's, it sounds like, Jason, you're saying that you, you would strike provision B regarding, uh, prescriptions and alcohol sold on the same premise. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that a motion? It doesn't have to be.
It's not. It, it was my thoughts.
All right, thanks. Uh, Amanda, I think I saw it coming. No, Amanda?
So I appreciate that. Um, I, I think the part of the original reason this is in here is there are pharmas, pharmacy groups that, um, have policies where they don't want their pharmacists selling alcohol. That's one thing. They're kind of against that because alcohol and prescription meds are sort of, you know, working against each other, right? Um, and I think this, I see where you're coming from, and I, I was thinking maybe we could have an alternate, uh, proposal instead if we change B instead of getting rid of it altogether.
Okay.
And just saying something like, uh, no Class A license shall be granted for any, or not that, um, but something like, I don't know how to word it, but where you can't sell, I know, I get, I'm getting there, but you can't get the, you can't buy alcohol where at the same point of sale where you buy prescription medications. And that would, you know, there's something I'm sure that Hy-Vee could have when they, if, if somebody tried to buy a six-pack with their prescription meds, you know, where it would pop up, and the, it gives an opportunity for the pharmacist to say to that person, hey, you know, if, if it's you taking these meds, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be drinking when you take those, or like to, or whoever's taking these, just know. It, it's a little bit of a, uh, a, a touch point for pharmacists to make sure people are using prescription meds responsibly. And also it makes people make the deliberate decision to purchase alcohol in a separate transaction. They don't have to drive, you know, two tenths of a mile or whatever it is, uh, but they, they would have to take it to another register, a regular grocery register to check out. And it just makes, it's that extra little bit of making people really buy, if they're going to buy alcohol, that they're making a deliberate choice to do so. As a compromise.
Who's up? Tom, you're leaning in like you might say something.
Um, I guess my general thought of this is, is the more we can streamline and simplify the process, it, it is better for us economically as a, as a community to, to, here's a, a community where we can come in and do business with and more easily get licenses, and it, it's not a complex process or difficulty process, cause sort of that provision for and the, um, element of it. So I, I would tend to as, simplify the process as much as possible in this scenario. We still have all the approval and decision control we have on licenses now, so that, that wouldn't be able to just come in and be a, uh, wide-open kind of environment. We'd still have the controls and, and management, it's just sort of a written kind of complexity.
Lynn?
I guess I'm going to respectfully disagree with that, only because streamlining, I think, is valuable. But in this case, we're talking about the health and safety of our residents. And I like the idea of essentially making it a thoughtful and deliberate process, that the village is standing to say that we think that there should be some deliberation and some pause put here. I, I hesitate to make it easy because, like you said, we will still have the control, but on a day-to-day basis, I want it to be clear if someone reads our ordinances that we're a village that stands for safe usage of these substances. And so I, I just, I'm not sure about the, um, efficiency piece.
Uh, Phil's going to speak. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm concerned about a, a provision where, uh, they have to take, go, go to one counter and pay for one thing and go to another counter and pay for something else. I think that just is going to end up with frustration for the customers and, and likely the, the employees and staff who are continuing to have to explain, you can pay for this here, but you have to pay for that there. For me, that would be, uh, I wouldn't understand it, and it seems frustrating, uh, currently.
So I'm going to agree with Amanda and with Lynn, and I disagree with both you gentlemen. I think number one, it is, like Amanda said, it needs to be a deliberate and thoughtful act. I am going to get this prescription, and I am also going to buy alcohol, and I'm going to do it at two different counters because it's something I want, and if I want it, then I'm going to do it. Damn the frustration, cause I'm going to do it. And I think that it does provide the intention on, of the, the person who is purchasing, and also the opportunity for the pharmacist to provide some warnings about mixing alcohol and, and, and prescription drugs. I also, um, have respectful frustration with Hy-Vee that they didn't know this before they made the decision to, to put a, a pharmacy in a place that sells al- alcohol, and now we are in a position of needing to change our ordinances to, to make this work for them. And I want it to work. However, I also understand exactly what Lynn is saying and concur with her completely that we don't want to just make things efficient so that it doesn't have to be deliberate and thoughtful. So I think that we need to leave that in there because it needs to be deliberate and thoughtful on both counts.
Jason?
Well, all right then. Um, so my, my continued thought is, um, honestly, I, 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 I'm all right with the adjustment. Um, I honestly think it's on the consumer to take personal responsibility. Um, a- and I don't personally, having worked with folks who've struggled with addiction, think that the symbolic stand that we take as a board is going to amount to a hill of beans, um, in terms of practically making any difference for anybody who struggles with those issues. Um, as a matter of fact, I think a pharmacist would probably have an easier chance if I came up with a six-pack of beer and had a Xanax with me at the same counter, they go, um, you know about that.
Exactly, exactly.
Versus having to go to a separate counter where you pay your medication, then go to the separate counter to buy your beer. But that's neither here nor there. That's me micromanaging other people. So, um, I think, so, so, so I, it, it really depends on, on the other aspects of the, the approval policy working well and really helping, I think, make education about substance abuse and awareness important and how to help someone once they realize they have a problem. I think preventing someone who struggles with those issues is probably not going to be very helpful, um, and maybe an overreach on our part.
Amanda?
Uh, thanks for everybody's thoughtful comments on this. Um, I just want to also, um, express that there are several pharmacist groups. And they have statements on this saying that pharmacists should not be required to sell alcohol. So it's not just about policing people, and you know, that, that's a good touch point if people try to do that. But they're, like you said, there's nothing preventing them from buying their pharmaceuticals and then going to the regular checkout. This also would not force pharmacists to sell alcohol to people. They are categorically against that. It's a terrible idea. Alcohol is not good for your health in any way, shape, or form. Granted, there are cigarettes and other things that are also not good for your health, but let's just tackle one problem at a time here. It's about alcohol licensing. So like, I think that as long as Hy-Vee can put something in place that, you know, maybe, maybe pharmacists can only sell pharmaceuticals at that counter and can't also, maybe you can't buy groceries. They're all grocery, all alcohol goes elsewhere, and that's just their policy. And people, I think, would understand that as long as it's posted, and they'll, they'll get used to it. But can I, can I ask to hear from the Hy-Vee representative?
Please, yes.
Wants to weigh in?
If you can state your name for the record, sir.
Phil Hoy with Hy-Vee. Thank you for the time this evening, and I appreciate the discussion. I would say that alcohol laws are, um, they're very unique, and your, your laws and ordinances being the way they are are unique as well. Um, so yes, I agree that it's regrettable that we didn't know about this before we purchased the pharmacy. I'd say we haven't run into a situation where, uh, a local ordinance has superseded state or, um, or some other, uh, regulation. So it's, it's the first time that we ever really ran into this. Uh, we've got several pharmacies and wine and spirit stores within the state of Wisconsin and have not run into this, um, before. With regards to the POS issue specifically, um, whether or not the actual physical POS machine can be altered in a way that doesn't allow the sale of alcohol, we can create a store policy, um, within the store that doesn't allow, if, if, if that's the direction, uh, that the board wants to take, we can create a store policy that doesn't allow the pharmacy to sell any alcohol, um, if that's what you'd like to see. So.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever direction you want to take it, we can, um, we can go either way if that's what you prefer.
So it sounds like that's, uh, something you can work with then, if, if that's, uh, what we should decide tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
I guess, I, then how would we, are we doing this as an exception or revision of policy? I, is, you know, the.
I, I think it's a change of ordinance, right?
This is a thing that you want to apply. I mean, if there's a future circumstance where there's, there's a pharmacy in a grocery store, if you want this applied, then I would say you want it to be in your ordinance.
I think you're up, Amanda.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Um, first, uh, I forget who, who mentioned it, but someone was saying, you know, we, we still have control over the alcohol policy and, and, you know, we wouldn't necessarily need the ordinance for that. My concern there is that someone could come to us and we'd deny them, and they'd say, well, but on, based on your ordinances, like you're, you're applying it unfairly. Like, why'd you say yes to me and no to that one? And that's where you get in trouble. So I mean, I like having some rules in place. Um, and I feel like if another store came to town that sold worldly gigs or whatever, and, and, uh, you know, and had a pharmacy in it and sold, had a Class A license, that would, or Class B even for, for, or beer, restaurant, whatever.
Class B is for on-premises.
Oh, okay, B is, okay, on-premises, sorry. So another Class A license then. Um, I think that this is a good way to say we still, we still want a little bit of separation. We don't want to put pharmacists in the position of selling alcohol, um, no matter who they work for.
Uh, Jason?
Yep, and I, I will say I, I can concur with that personally. Um, and there's other municipalities in Wisconsin, and I can think of Janesville, Stoughton, who have separate POSs. If Hy-Vee's okay with that, separating the POS for, uh, for, uh, pharmacy sales from, from alcohol sales, that, that seems like a good compromise.
I'd be good with that as well. It's clear, and it'd be consistent going forward. It's something we can apply to future requests.
Looks like we're ready for a motion then. Amanda? Do we have what you need?
I assume the motion is to direct, uh,
Staff?
Staff and try to draft an ordinance.
Yes, that.
So we can do, we can have, we can do that and have it ready for the next meeting.
So essentially, you're going to say that, uh, no, is it amount to no alcohol sales at the pharmacy register? Is that the gist of it?
I think it's, if you can't do any, you can't combine pharm, you can't, wouldn't be able to do your pharmacy at the regular checkout. You'd have to do it at the pharmacy. You can't go to the regular checkout and do alcohol, cause the regular checkout's going to have groceries and everything else normally. So you'd almost have to just say pharmacy is at the pharmacy only. Is that?
Yeah, how would you handle this? What?
We would just say that the pharmacy counter does not transact alcohol sales. That's what we would do. We would limit alcohol sales to the other POS and the other parts of the store and not the pharmacy window.
So if I wanted my prescription meds and a bag of chips, I could buy that at the pharmacy?
Correct.
Could I also buy that at the regular checkout once I pick up my prescription? Or would I have to buy it at the register?
I would say most cases, you are reviewing that prescription with your pharmacist, um, and you are buying that prescription at that window. You are not taking that then to another separate window and paying for it. So obviously, most pharmaceuticals, and I would say it's, it is also pretty rare that people are buying alcohol with their pharmacies or other groceries. It might be the case that they're buying chips or something, some other over-the-counter medication at the same time, um, or some other health food item that they want to buy with their prescription. But there's not a lot of other grocery, but it is a convenience piece, something that we want to be able to do, sell, sell another item to somebody. You know, if you're checking out the pharmacy, you probably don't feel very good, and you're probably not wanting to go around from POS to POS and to complete your transaction, your sale.
Sure. I'm good with that.
Yep, we're directing staff. Is there a motion for it?
We have a motion from Amanda, seconded by Tom. Any more dis, further discussion?
And, and for clarification, this is prescription pharmaceuticals, not like over-the-counter Tylenol, things like that, correct?
That's what I got.
Okay.
Just, uh, one point two, Walgreens was brought up. Um, they would still not be able to get a Class A because of the geographic density requirement.
Okay.
Even with this change.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I caught Peterson, but I didn't catch you second. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion. Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, the chair votes no. There was a, a, an additional mode in here, in the memo about the standard of this, uh, point two miles. Certainly, we're not obligated to, uh, deal with that tonight, but I believe it's going to come up in the future. Do we want to discuss that or move on, deal that at a later date?
That's the density issue, or the?
Yeah. Should we deal with it when it becomes an issue, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's going to be an issue around, um, vaping sales as well. So I think there will talk about density in these kinds of circumstances.
Okay, general agreement? Okay, thank you.
Phil will be in touch.
Okay. Isn't, you didn't pass an actual ordinance tonight?
Nope.
No.
Ordinance will come back for.
Two weeks.
On the eighteenth.
Okay.
Does there have to be a public hearing on that, or is it just a?
Nope.
Okay.
It's just a simple approval by the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I think we, we seem to be on the same page. I wouldn't expect that that, anything drastic is going to change, but.
Okay. It only matters for us in terms of construction and, and moving forward with the actual pharmacy itself.
You're not going to start selling pharmaceuticals before the next meeting, right?
I know where you're.
Oh, but they're going to start remodeling, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Uh, let's see here, where are we? Okay. That's right. Uh, item ten, reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants. This is for information only and no action by the village board will be taken to see reports in meeting packet. A, village administrator report in your packet, and a questions or pardon or anything? Hearing on, item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings, and events in miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body may occur. Statements from the village board, Amanda and Lynn.
So, uh, I just wanted to give a, um, get, make sure people are aware of what the transportation committee, um, discussed lately. There's, um, been some emails about interim transportation to the new library. Uh, we discussed that at length at the transportation committee, um, and, uh, there seem to be enough, um, things in place for older people, for youth. There's, there's, um, you know, most people have access to the library. Um, we've heard that there are some families who might be struggling to get there, um, and if, uh, but we don't know if they can be helped by outreach services or not. We basically need more data. So I would just say to anybody listening that if you are going to have trouble getting to the new library because it moved, uh, mile out west, then, then please contact, uh, somebody from the transportation committee or contact, uh, Laura Stata at the library or Jennifer Way. Uh, they have said they will do everything they can to help you with outreach services. And, um, if that isn't good enough, we certainly need to hear about it because if there's a problem, we want to help fix it. But we don't know the extent of the problem. So, thanks.
Lynn?
I just wanted to, well, along those same lines, make the announcement that the library is closing on December eleventh. Um, so if you need to get your books before Christmas, get on over there and then go to the new library in January.
Okay. Carleen?
Just want to make another plea for folks for the, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. Um, we are down to five members. So we need two more and possibly three more, as we'd like to have two students if possible. So, uh, if you're interested, please apply.
I think, uh, just to add, we have also openings on, um, uh, transportation.
On transportation.
Transportation committee as well. So if that interests you, please apply.
I'll also send that around with the board vacancy tomorrow as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, uh, next item, uh, village board meetings, FYI, for January, rescheduled to January eighth and January twenty-second due to New Year's Day and Martin Luther King Jr. Day holidays. Item eleven B, future agenda items. Anyone? Seeing that, uh, item twelve adjournment. Both, uh, Jason and, uh, Carleen. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned. Pose, motion carries. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.